Good evening. This evening is October twenty first and we are having just a work session tonight. It is five thirty P M. And we will start out this evening with an update, a city update from Mr. Brian McCain.
Thank you, ma'am. The L Central Del Quinto Soul trunk or treat is this Saturday, October twenty sixth from four to seven P M. At six oh nine East Sixth Street. Games candy and fun for everyone, free to the public. Our team up to cleanup free dump day is this Saturday, October twenty sixth from eight to three P M. With now three locations. Two locations for household trash and large furniture disposal at C S U Pueblo in the Colorado State Fairgrounds. No cost to residents, but you must be a city resident. So please bring your driver's license or utility bill. No commercial vehicles, rented trucks or oversized trailers, up to five tires per household accepted without rims. Furniture, mattresses and excess carpet are also accepted. The green waste location is located at Pueblo Recycle Works at fifteen ninety five Stockyard Road. Yardway should be easily accessible in a trash bag or box. For more information, call Public Works at seven one nine five five three two two nine five. Just a reminder to everyone, the P U C Commission Town Halls are next week on Tuesday and Wednesday, the twenty ninth and thirtieth. They're here at Memorial Hall from five to eight P M. Downstairs each night. A S L and Spanish interpretation provided on Tuesday, October twenty ninth. Both sessions will be live streamed on Channel seventeen and the City of Pueblo Facebook page. Sign up to speak in person for up to three minutes. And if you cannot attend, you can still contact the P U C to let them know your thoughts on the Black Hills proposed eighteen percent rate increase. Information is on the city's homepage under Black Hills Public Comments. We're going to have Halloween at City Hall. The public is invited to come trick or treating. At City Hall on Thursday, October thirty first from three to five P M. Candy from City Departments inside City Hall. Please use the South Interest with parking lot shared with the Riverwalk facing businesses near the Sarah Shaw statue outside. And save the date for the Ice Cup twenty twenty four Saturday, November sixteenth. It's the Fire versus Police for the eighth annual event. Money raised from the event will be used to support various youth programs. And that concludes my update.
All righty. Thank you, Mr. McCain. Anything from Council? Uh, Counselor Flores.
I wanted to remind everybody that on November the eighth, I will be. Uh, I've put together an economic forum at P C C between seven and nine thirty. Seven to eight is really going to be breakfast. There's no charge for this. We'll have Dr. Bailey as our main speaker, talking about the economy. And then we'll have Susie Miller, who is the Executive Director of the Colorado Rural Employment Consortium, the consortium. And she'll be talking about workforce development. So as you know, the city sponsored. The Economic Dashboard and it has been now completely moved over to Petco as the prime. Driver of the Economic Dashboard, which is the way it was all planned. We've, we funded it for two years. It's now under the purview of Petco. They'll be. Uh, the one driving this economic dashboard forward. The Economic Forum is something that I started that complemented it. But it will be kind of under the auspices of Petco. But I'm still kind of involved because I am a Petco Board Member until my term is up. So I encourage all of you to, to go to that. It's going to be really valuable information. I never even thought about the fact it'll be after the election. So I'm sure that Tatiana Bailey will have a lot to say about. The results of the election. And we have a, about a twenty minute question and answer period. So people will be able to ask questions. So. I encourage all of you. It will be added to the, to your invite memo that you get. It wasn't on there today, but she's going to update that. So I encourage you. If nothing else, the breakfast is free. So.
Thank you. The date again, Counselor?
November the eighth.
November the eighth.
Yeah. Okay. That's all I have. Thank you.
All right, uh, Counselor Latino.
Thank you. I don't know if this is appropriate and if it's not, I'm sure you'll tell me. I, I've had a number of calls, a number of communications from various people in this community. And a ton of emails as it relates to the abortion issue that we dealt with. Here in this, in this dais. And my vote. And I want to be very clear. I voted the way that I did. I'm not for, I'm, I'm. I'm not for abortion. I want that to be very clear. But I voted the way that I did because basically it's not going to stop at this level. It's going to go to the. Legislature, possibly the governor. And finally, the State Supreme Court. And being as liberal as they are, they're going to. It's going to go right through. And where it's going to stop is at the United States Supreme Court where there's a majority. Again, I was raised in, in, in an environment. I was educated in a, in a pro kill system. And. I'm not for abortion. Now there's, there's extenuating circumstances. Where life is involved and that, that, that may be another factor. That I think that indefinitely is another factor. When I was, when I was being born, the doctor told my dad all those years ago, which was about ten, fifteen, twenty five years ago. The doctor said, your, your, your wife or your, or your, or your child. And then my dad said, you try to save them both. So if you're going to do the woo bop a do. Then you need to take precautions and they're available. Okay. But I'm not for abortion. Thank you.
Okay, anyone else? Well, with that, we'll get started and get into the budget tonight with Mayor Graham. And Danny Nun, a director of finance and term director of finance.
Thank you, Counselor Maestri. Uh, before you, I've printed out the presentation. So you guys also have a copy of it. Um, in front of you. So tonight we're going to talk about the capital improvement portion of the budget. I briefly touched on all of this last week, but this is a more in-depth look at each of the capital projects that are being. Uh, proposed to you tonight and in the twenty twenty five budget. So what is a capital improvement project when it comes to the city? Um, it is an improvement that can impact the budget by increasing or decreasing revenues and expenditures. Revenues can increase if the improvement attracts new businesses, building permits, sales tax and property tax. And expenditures can also increase if the improvement results in increased operating and maintain costs. Capital expenditures are costs. Um, they're additional costs that aren't covered in each department's operating. So these are one-time projects that essentially should be done and completed within the one year that they're budgeted for. And as I shared with you last week, we know that hasn't always been happening. Some projects are strung over several years. Um, so we're really going to work on doing projects that we can complete within the one year that you allocate the funds for. So some of the improvements or projects. Can be land or land improvements, like purchase of land or improvements to land. Um, same thing with building or building improvements, infrastructure on roads, wastewater, stormwater, traffic signals. Machinery, equipment over twenty five hundred, software over twenty five thousand and artwork and historical treasures. The capital improvement project essentially follows these steps. So capital projects are requested with a benefit analysis. By each of our city departments. Um, a capital improvement plan is then brought to my level. It's drafted. It said presented in front of the Planning and Zoning Commission, which they review the plan. If they have disagreements or there's questions to be asked, I then review it again and potentially adjust the plan. That didn't happen this year. It just went to. Um, the planning board, but there was some questions on stormwater fees, how they're collected and how they're spent, but. Um, no adjustments made. The city council then reviews the plan, what you're doing tonight. And then the city council adopts the plan within the annual budget. Any questions so far on process? So like I had spoke, um, last week, we talked about the different funding sources. Uh, for capital improvement. Uh, for previous years, we've been taking millions of dollars out of general fund to get projects. Completed. Uh, most recently, we took twelve million dollars last year. The majority of that. Uh, went to roads and other infrastructure projects. Some will be reverted back to the general fund because those projects hadn't even been started up into this point. Um, my requests this year from general fund are three hundred and fifty five thousand dollars. And these are requests that couldn't be. Paid for by the half cent sales tax, um, interest because they're grant matches. So these have to come out of the general fund request. So we have our home grant match, which is two hundred thousand. And this is a twenty five percent match for the HUD home grant. That we received to benefit affordable housing. Emergency rehab loan program at fifty thousand. So this is a loan program that people can apply for, um, with low income. Uh, to make repairs to their house. They can apply to up to twenty five thousand dollars for a home. Section three employment criteria. This is another twenty five percent match. Um, and this has to do with the outreach training and skills building that are needed to fulfill this requirement. The market study, which is, this is a requirement now of a bill that was passed twenty four dash one seventy four. And it requires the city to complete a housing market analysis. Um, that'll begin in twenty twenty six. Um, so this is another grant match that we had to supply. And then the last one is twenty five thousand for a needs assessment. This was asked on the behalf of the C S A Commission, um, the community. Um, in the community meeting, they requested that the public service, uh, that they need an assessment to try to see how their fund should be spent with C S A. So this came, uh, straight from their board. The biggest, um, chunk overall besides the. Um, enterprises is going to come from the economic development interests. This total is about three point two million dollars. So at the top, we have city building maintenance. So any maintenance that will need to be done on any of the buildings that we own at three hundred and twenty five thousand. Um, airport rehab for one of the, um, wings of the airport at fifteen thousand. The fire E K G monitors, two hundred thousand and. Um, you'll see this ask over the next three years by the time that we have to replace all of the E K G, uh, monitor. So we're going to do two hundred thousand a year over three years. The fire station upgrades for the fire stations that are much older, um, and need a little bit of. Help for health and wellness for the station. Um, Chief Huber had came and explained to you. That about two hundred thousand could be used for the existing. Fire stations to, um, get them brought up to where they need to be. A S U V for municipal court in order to help transport patients or patients, I'm sorry. Um, prisoners that, um, they don't have a dependable vehicle right now and it continuously breaks down. So that was an ask through municipal court. The restroom fence enclosure at El Centro at fifteen thousand. Our citywide cleanup projects at two hundred thousand. So after our cleanup this Saturday. We will have exhausted the ARPA funds that have been used, that have been set aside over the last couple of years at three hundred thousand to put the community events on. Um, for the cleanups. Drones as first responders. These are drones that will integrate with the real time crime center. Um, that instead of sending police officers out to clear calls, drones could potentially be used to. Be sent out through the real time crime center. In order for the officers to get a better look of what's going on before they get there and they can potentially, um, clear calls. That'll help with our response time. I T tech upgrades at one point five million. So these are specific upgrades that are used in all city departments for technology. And then last is City Hall Security Upgrades at three hundred and fifty thousand. This is capital money that will increase the security measures. Here at City Hall. So. Um, essentially what the plan would be to place an outdoor sprung structure on the one interest we have now. Um, have metal detectors, um, in order to make the facility safer. As I. Told you a couple of weeks ago, this is one of the only facilities that you can just walk in the door and get to the mayor's office or any of departments or city council chambers. Um, this will could potentially be a cost split with O B G who, um. Runs Memorial Hall for the shows because they're also having a difficult time when people are coming in for concerts and plays. They have to hire a significant amount of people to wand everybody down to get in and out. This is also, um, one of their only. Um, halls that they don't have metal detectors and they don't have increased security. And so. That's our total at three point two million. Does anybody have any questions on this one?
Yeah, I'm just curious in reference when they do this kind of cost benefit analysis stuff versus say like taking care of a city park, like in Bestin Park, for instance. All the graffiti, all the ruining of the tiles, all damaging the statues, the cleanup, uh, the keeping. Uh, control of the park between reasonable hours. What is that? Are there any numbers that are put to what that would cost if we did something like they do in New York? New York is parked very similar to this, believe it or not, small areas. Very and very, very nice oriental, uh, ornamental fencing nickels all around. But you're not going to be in there past ten o'clock. And so has those things been figured out in reference to? It's going to cost you money upfront. That fence is going to be pretty big, I'd take it. Uh, as opposed to what you'd be saving by keeping everything safe and clean and damage proof. Has that been done?
Uh, not specifically. That wasn't an idea that was brought up the share counselor, but. When we get a little bit farther down in the presentation, we have lottery funds that come to assist all of our parks. And so that's definitely something that could be, um, looked at next year for, uh, making the parks safer as you state.
Okay, thank you.
Anybody else? Okay. Next, moving on to the enterprise golf fund. So these are three projects. Um, the golf courses generate their own revenue and it's kept in a fund in which they do. Um, replacements and repairs on. So, uh, the first project that was requested was repair replacement at Elmwood. So. Um, replacing the existing cart paths, um. And some deterioration that they've seen since twenty twenty one. Um, the driving range net replacement at twelve thousand. And a storage building addition, um, at fifty thousand. And these were asks that came. Um, from the Parks Department and the golf course. And this total is a hundred and eighty two thousand out of the enterprise fund for the golf course.
I was going to say, uh, Madam Mayor, that, uh, serving on both the golf boards, those things are an absolute necessity. So. Uh, I, I will support that. And I think that's a good thing that we're bringing that up. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor. Anybody else on the golf course?
Yeah, could you, uh, I don't know, Dan, if you could, uh, tell me. What makes an enterprise fund different, uh? Than any other fund that we have in the city? What, what does that actually mean when somebody says this is going to come out of an enterprise fund?
Mm-hmm. Sure. Absolutely. So in enterprise fund, in essence, is a business that the city owns. They generate their own revenues and sustain themselves. Uh, so for the city, we have the. Golf course enterprises, wastewater, stormwater. Each of these entities do business and generate revenue. From citizens, from services that they provide. And they are, uh, designed to not be supported by funds from the general fund.
So when the golf course charges someone green fees to play a round of golf. That goes into an enterprise fund because they generated the funds through a ticket sale. Uh, the, the kitty rides is an example, uh, even though they're twenty five cents for a ticket. Uh, they, they also have, uh, an enterprise fund, uh, to improve, obviously, the kitty rides. But you can say that about a lot of, um. Other, uh, services that we provide. Uh, or is there a limitation as to where, uh, it's no longer an enterprise fund?
So with the golf course enterprise, any revenues that they generate stays with the. Golf course itself.
Now, anything the park does to the same thing, uh, stays, it doesn't. You're shaking your head.
No, so parks is part of the general fund. So the kitty rides, the pools. These are all subsidized by the general fund. Um, so the funds that they bring. In do not support themselves. It's a service that we provide to the city. And that any revenues that they bring in all go back to the general fund to support citywide operations.
Right. Somewhere down the line, we should have a list of all our enterprise funds. Uh, I'd like to see that list as to. Who it is, but then the city departments that have an enterprise fund.
Absolutely. In your proposed budget book, there's actually a section. Uh, tabbed enterprise funds in that lists each enterprise the city has.
Yeah, I'll look at that later. Thank you.
You're welcome.
Counselor Gomez?
Yeah, um, in reference to golf, um. They don't play a lot of golf in Bessemer, but, um, but what it's worth, we were kicking around some ideas. If you ever hear anything called first tee. It's getting pretty big. It's in some of these other states where they try to bring younger people in. All from all walks of life, poor, rich, and they basically get them into golf. So I was kicking around some ideas with another guy and thinking about, what about if we had something, since we have the tennis courts out here and all this? What about some like first volley? Where first he's getting so big now. They have, they have foundation stuff. They have fundraisers. They, they can absorb a lot of the costs associated with running a tennis court or, um, a golf, a golf course. But I just wonder if you ever heard of that. I'd like to get you some more information. But that's kind of a, a program development I think is really important because we don't have a lot of kids getting exposed, to be honest with you, to tennis. Unless you're in high school and all that stuff. But I think it could be maybe a mutual, uh, what do you call it? An amateur kind of league or an auxiliary league or for something for kids. Just something like to throw at you down the road here, if you'd be interested. Thank you.
Anyone else? Oh. President Alist.
Thank you. Maybe, uh, Stephen Meyer could answer this question for me, but for five years on the enterprise. Fund in the capital improvement plans was the restroom rehabilitation and, and, uh. Getting it up to speed on the, uh, nine hole course. And now it's gone and I don't know what's going on with that.
Yeah, we're, we're currently working on that restroom right now. It should be going out to bid here in the next month.
So it was on this year's.
So yeah, it's already be, it's in the works of being built.
Perfect. Thank you.
Okay, next we have our other two enterprise funds. So we have wastewater, um, and the storm water. And you can see the wastewater, um, at seventeen million dollars has, um, some significant. Improvements and replacements, um, that need to be done in this year. Um, I'll let you take a look at those and just as well as, um, storm water about a million dollars. These are also two enterprises that don't affect general fund, but they are, um, essentially their own accounts. And Andrea and Andrew are here to answer questions if you have anything specific that they're, um, asking for.
Um, any questions?
Yeah.
Um, Counselor Gomez.
I'm just, I'm always learning every day. That's why I ask a lot of questions. Um, when you talk about these enterprise funds and I see wastewater and stormwater and all this, I notice all the numbers. But what I'm always looking for is a start date, an end date. Are they going to throw a study at us? It's going to absorb more time. All these things, I don't see it in this and I guess I can get that answer down the road, I suppose. But that's what I think we're lacking in city government. We've come up with these numbers and ideas, but we never see the basic is what's a start date? You know, are you going to wait? Are you going to do it? And then something comes up insurance or something's going to come up with a, you know, a suit or. I'd like to see that more spelled out and maybe you can fill me in on that later, but it helps me with my brain because it's not a very good brain sometimes. Thank you.
Anyone else? Okay.
The next is the, um, lottery funds and these are the funds that I was referring to. Um, Counselor Gomez. So we receive about one point four million dollars in lottery funds a year. Uh, four hundred thousand goes to the general fund to help support the staff at the parks and, uh, pay our employees that work there. Um, and these are the four projects that we, um, chose to bring forward. So. Five hundred thousand for the Arkansas River Corridor where Waterworks is, um, almost done redoing the low head dam. And, uh, the council approved the, um, study a couple of council meetings ago about the master plan for the Arkansas River Corridor. So, um, I foresee that being very busy this spring and summer. And I think that we really need to work on the lighting down there. Uh, the parking and how people are going to be able to access that area. So we've allocated five hundred thousand to that. Uh, three hundred and twenty five thousand for parks purchasing, um, equipments, maintenance equipments and vehicles that they need to purchase throughout the year. The, uh, tennis clubhouse and bleacher renovation. So these would be shade coverings, um, over three rows of bleachers. Uh, for the seventeen courts when the clubhouse is finished. And a Lake Menacaw, um, dredge study at twenty five thousand dollars. This is totaling a million dollars.
Any questions? Uh, Counselor Flores?
Yeah, I had, I had brought up Lake Menacaw several months ago, I think. And, uh, I thought a lake like that just needs to be dredged. I didn't realize that you needed to study to do the dredging because it's just full of silt. Uh, the theory is that you could walk out to the middle of that lake and your head still wouldn't be underwater. Because there is so much silt built up. So can somebody explain what the study is going to determine? It sounds like maybe there's going to be. More added to this on how maybe we can use the shoreline, how we can get rid of. A lot of the, the, the growth that's developing. And by the way, you can smell the lake now everywhere in, uh, Menacaw Heights area, uh, including the hospital. Cause it, and I don't know whether it's a time of the year, but it really stinks there when you, a certain part of the day.
You're right. It does stink probably about once a year. Lake turns over. Like you're right, it's real shallow for the most part of it. Most of the perimeter around it is like. A foot to eighteen inches deep. And that's why I see so many, um, cattails and those kinds of grasses that are growing in there. They grow in those shallow waters. Um. I did, the U P A even went out and checked because they were getting complaints about the smell. She did call me back and said she didn't smell anything. So it must've been a good day, but I know it does smell around that area. So the feasibility saying would come in and they actually do test of what's underneath there, the silt and the, see what kind of. If there's contaminants or just check the quality of it and see what it could be reused as. Um, determine what that depth is, what it should be. To determine what, you know, how much to dredge. Is he dredging, you know, is it three foot, five foot, you know, how? Much and, and what would you do with all that quantity that comes out of there? Do you haul it off? Do you reuse it, reshape it around the perimeter? What do you do with that silt? And, and how do you manage, when that dredging happens, you're going to be taking out all that sludge as you talk about. That silt and it's going to be real smelly. Talk about smell. So it's really just going to stir that up. And how do you mitigate all that? And so that's what the feasibility study is going to come in. Can also be a part of a conceptual plan of what to do with that, um, materials and, and how to form it. Whether you create islands or, or what have you. So that's, that's why we need to do a feasibility study first. And we're looking at applying for a grant this, this fall, the end of the year.
There's, uh. Uh, you, you hear constantly older people talk about that lake being used in the past.
And then.
When they had the Menacaw Club there and they water skied, they did boating, they did fishing. Uh, yeah. And I know that we have not, you know, we don't have the money to even be thinking about that, but somewhere down the line. Uh, it really has a lot of potential, I think. Uh, and also, you know, repairing, uh, Lake Shore Drive, which is in really bad shape.
Uh, it, it needs to be done just to check the, the wildlife, you know, it needs to be. That water call needs to be improved to be able to hold the fish, different kinds of fish back in there. And, you know, we, we, we release fish in there and they. You know, typically die during the. And you know, we, we, we release fish in there and they, you know, typically die during the heat of the summer. Um, it just gets too shallow and warms up too hot, so.
And I had, uh, last thing I have is I had mentioned to you that um, Avera Steel has a dredging machine. Uh, that they might lend us. Uh, they use it for the fishing of feather. The ponds are up south of us. So I just bring that up if that's a possibility of.
Yeah, I think they have a line dredger that scoops it, like taking it across there.
Right, thank you, appreciate it.
Uh, councillor Gomez?
Maybe it's me, but I can't imagine that lake being there as long as it's been that they, they can't look at it on, on older study that's already been done. I mean, here we go another twenty-five thousand here. Um, I'm just curious. And again, I'd like to know, do we have numbers on a start date, an end date, or we just, um. These kind of things, projects that they throw at us, those are the kind of information I don't see unless I'm looking, I look in the right place, which is very possible with me. But do we have any, there's been those studies done in the past?
None that I've found or aware of, pretty, pretty much no. So we've got to create that study. This is a match to a grant. Want to say it's Colorado Water Board, uh, Division, State Water Board. Um, but it'd be a match to a grant that they would provide probably about another hundred and fifty, hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars. And uh, so it'd be a total of about a hundred and fifty thousand dollar study.
What's the duration? What's the time, what's the start date?
I assume we got that grant be the first part of the year. Um, probably take two, three, four months to get the agreements all signed with the state. And, and go out to bid for a consultant to come in and actually do that study. It'd be, it'd probably be fall to winter would be a. Of next year.
Next year, okay, we're in fall, next year, okay.
I'm hoping. All right, I'd like to get it done before they, then they have another round. That same grant company, they have another round then in next, in the next year that we can apply for funds to actually do the dredging. If it comes out, uh, the study says it's feasible.
As far as I'm concerned, that should be the one of the most beautiful lakes in the state. I mean, it's got everything there. It's, it's there and it's, you wanna talk about an asset you could develop and, and, and. You cost benefit, I think in the long run, if you really took a look at that lake and just take a view. Lake Shore Drive is criminal. I mean, that, that should be a beautiful place that you can come through. And I was looking at. I'm sorry, I'm reading so much stuff. You gave it to me. You say, but I just think we have so many things that we can develop here and really come out on the other end and it'd be to our, to our profit. I really believe that. I don't know.
Councillor Flores?
Uh, just a couple of other things uh, that maybe we could get um, grants through. And that is, there's been several fires in that area, uh, two or three fires. It just seems like uh, if for nothing else, we need to mitigate all those. All that growth that's going around the perimeter of the, of the lake and uh.
I agree.
And then I, I'm assuming just to save some time here, we're talking about twenty twenty-five funding. So we can assume, uh, sometimes it's not possible, but we can assume that everything you're presenting tonight. Not only in this area, but any area, aren't intended to spend the money. And our start date is somewhere in twenty twenty-five.
Yeah, these are why we chose the projects that we did because we, we'd like, and we know the community wants to see a tangible item completed in the year that the funds are allocated. So when we went through the project list, it was projects that we thought that the staff had the capacity um, in order to complete in twenty twenty-five.
So um, as far as the um, grant match, we don't have that yet. We still have to apply for it?
Yeah, it would have to be budgeted and through the budget process would be available first of January. The grant application goes in, I think, at the first part of December, so we don't have to have a budget before then. So next January is good.
Okay, so it's a supposed grant, it's not a, in a final grant.
Right.
Okay. All right, um.
I have a question.
Oh, oh, yes.
Um, so I, I guess similar to councillor Flores's question, mayor, are you anticipating all these projects to be completed? In twenty twenty-five?
Not completed, but a, a good start on them. Um, you know, there was some projects that. In, in our last presentation that hadn't even been, been started as of, you know. When we started this budget, looking at these budget capital requests. So we're just trying to figure out projects that we think can be completed um, within the year or started and well on their way.
And how many of these projects are rolled over from la- uh, from this fiscal year?
None of these projects have been rolled over. These are all.
New?
New asks.
Okay, thanks.
Okay, moving on to roads. So um, the roads budget for twenty twenty-five is gonna be about five point five million dollars. Um, three million of it will be the highway user. Um, fee that you see and we are projected to receive about three million dollars in this um. Uh, from the state and then. We had spoke about the um, projects for twenty-one, twenty-two and twenty-three. That all the road money hadn't been used, so we are closing those accounts out and bringing them into twenty twenty-five. Um, for the additional two point five million to, to have a five point five million dollar road project for twenty twenty-five. Any questions on this one?
I thought the highway users tax and then there wasn't something else that went with it always added.
We used to have that street utility. Um, because councillor Mastry, but I believe in twenty twenty-two, the council put a, hold on it. So it has not been collected for two years and that used to generate about two point five million dollars a year.
Okay, and I think it was twenty twenty-one.
Twenty twenty-one, yes, before you're on council.
Okay, um. Okay, any, any other questions?
This is a council member request that I wanted to include in the presentation. So this is a request for councillor Flores um, that I wanted to present to the city council. About potentially adding a hundred thousand dollars uh, more for the Sky Corral um, project. Um, this would need to be an ask from general fund, um, if the council wanted to put this one forward. So it would be a total of a hundred and fifty thousand dollars from the city that we would have supported to the Sky Corral.
Yeah, th- this is a very, very long story. Uh, I started talking to uh, the city. Uh, our, our city departments that are involved in this probably over two years ago. And uh, originally uh, it really involves uh, a, what's called a model airplane. Uh, runway that we've owned for fifty years. And as a result of the new uh, Medal of Honor Road. Uh, it made that runway obsolete. But this runway is really an asset that belongs to the city. And uh, so I met with uh, the previous county commissioners. And uh, we had, we had come up with an agreement of sharing, at that time we had a bid. To, to redo this runway so that it wouldn't impede this road project. And we had agreed to invest two hundred thousand dollars apiece. And we had gotten to that point, hoping that that would uh, would be a road uh, that we would be able to salvage this uh, this, this uh. Runway. Uh, well, uh, things happen, time goes by and uh, the same county commissioners. Uh, went away. It was a whole new set of county commissioners that we had to deal with. And uh, they were not interested in contributing anything. So we've had several meetings going back and forth. And the only opportunity that we had was during the period uh, that they were needing uh, the city of Pueblo to sign off on this project. And uh, they couldn't move forward for the construction of the new road unless we signed off on it. It was at that time that I said, all right, well, let's all come to the table and resolve this little tiny issue. And we have no problems moving forward. So we did have a meeting, they capitulated. And, and as if you, uh, you do remember the, the lady that represented the, the general contractor that's gonna build the road. They were willing to, to give the project a hundred thousand dollars and that's still on the table. The county agreed to give fifty thousand and then we were gonna contribute fifty thousand. And I thought at that point, man, that's a good deal. We, we were, we were gonna go two hundred thousand into this if I could have got that passed. Well, uh, this thing is still dragging on, dragging on. And uh, a lot of the equipment that was gonna use to do this runway uh, is gone now. If you'll go out there, they've cut the roads, they've cut all of the drainage areas, so all the, all the equipment's not there anymore. So we're still not there and uh. I'm hoping that we don't have to spend any of this money. And I really would like, I, I wanna add it on there as a contingency. Uh, if you'll notice, most of the contracts that we deal with, there's always a contingency number. Sometimes it's ten, fifteen percent of the project that was bid. But in this particular case, I'm fearful that with all of the roadblocks that we've had on this thing. And there's, and nothing is coming to conclusion that, that uh, the two hundred thousand that we have in the bank right now. To do this project's not gonna be enough. And maybe it is because a lot of that was gonna be done by the general contractor. And maybe that's not a big deal that the equipment isn't in there, maybe they'll bring new equipment. But I just, I just, I just think that we need to protect our asset there. Uh, we can't land, I mean, if the two hundred thousand is only gonna pay for three quarters of that runway. Uh, it's useless. We need to make it whole and I'm hoping that we don't have to use a penny of this. Uh, but I'm, I'm not really, I, I'm not comfortable. I've been so frustrated for the last two years that we cannot get this thing closed. The county has agreed to run the whole contract and they'll be responsible for it. But I'm just trying to cover our backside in uh, in making sure that this thing gets done. All, all I'm trying to do is protect an asset that we have.
Any, anyone else? Councillor Gomez?
They're looking for a signature from us.
I'm just asking for, remember, at the end of the day, we're gonna be asked to vote up or down on this budget. It's gonna be one vote as to whether or not the budget that we present in front of us is palatable to all of us. And uh, this is, this is the time that we're maneuvering to make sure that everything. Uh, that we need to accomplish for twenty twenty-five is included in our budget. You know, uh, any of us can make a suggestion. This is my suggestion. Uh, to put this money in there as a.
Contingency so that we don't have any su- more surprises than we've already had on this project. So at the end of the day, uh, it's better to know now as to whether or not uh, you guys agree. If you guys agree that is, you don't care going forward about what's gonna happen, then it won't be included in the budget. And that's why the mayor put it on there because I had asked for this to be done about two weeks ago. So.
Yeah, I feel uncomfortable, you know, after the fact, everything that we were told upfront and we all agreed to help. And now we're coming back with another hundred thousand dollar ask. And if, what happens if they don't get our signature? How important is that to them?
The signature's already been given to them by us.
So we're, we're there already?
That, that's done. And, and recollect that the original ask was gonna be two hundred thousand.
Right.
So if we have to use this hundred thousand, that's only one fifty of what I thought we were gonna have to spend to, to keep that asset active. But more importantly, okay, th- the road, uh, us signing off on the road. Was extremely important because of the economic development and the amount of additional sales tax the city's gonna get. From what's going on over there. If you've been over there, it's gonna be, it's gonna be awesome. I mean, it's gonna be more than. Than enough to pay for the hundred and fifty that we might have to invest in this.
Didn't we say we saved them a lot of money by helping them with the road to begin with? I think you said in the millions, was that correct?
Yeah, the road was never designed to be in that spot. And then they, they came back and said, we're gonna save a lot of money by not having to build culverts. Over on a road that was actually pan- to go to the south of the, the jail. So now it's in the ideal spot for them, but not the ideal spot for this uh, this model airplane airstriped. It's, it's basically made that airstrip worthless. I mean, it, it would be like somebody getting a bulldozer and just bulldozing the thing away. It's an asset that belongs to us and we should try to keep it.
Um, can we have an update for Mr. Hayes? I mean, he's the one that's working with the county and so forth.
Sure.
Um.
Being a council, the uh. President of the Sky Corral and I have been working together on getting the final layout of a, of a runway. Uh, to uh, set the permitted area that'll be uh, ultimately authorized for their use for this project. So there are still questions about scope. Uh, we've got a, a length, a width, that kind of stuff. But we have not yet settled with the county on what the scope of work will be in terms of asphalt thickness, base course thickness. And everything else that needs to be done in order to meet the project requirements. So what is coming is a uh, draft of an agreement that will be. Uh, it'll, it'll codify the transfer of the fifty thousand dollars that the city had committed to uh, to the county for the project. It codifies the county's responsibility with respect to executing that project. They're gonna pick the contractor. They're going to pick. Um, everything about that, right? So this is, we have zero privity of contract. But we are also gonna set in there is some acceptance criteria for the project. So uh, ultimately they are going to manage, oversee and warrant the project. And then we have acceptance criteria on the backend for when the project is completed about what's acceptable to us. Uh, so there's, while there was money discussed between the city, the county and uh, the, the lady that was here. Uh, the full cost of the project has not been determined, has not been bid out and the county is going to decide how to do that. So this is entirely in their court, but what we owe the county right now is a, is an agreement that moves the money from the city to the county, the fifty thousand that we talked about. The, defines the scope of work for the project and ultimately again sets that acceptance criteria. And then outlines cities and the county's responsibilities with respect to management of the project.
So we just in the middle of a process, Mr. Hayes, it's not, or is there a threat? That um, this pro- project is just being delayed and it's just gonna possibly cost more.
No, and, and let me clarify too. I, I know you brought up the equipment being gone. So I understand this is not, not, uh, not our contract, but I understand that there was a dispute between the prime and the subcontractor out there and that the subcontractor. Uh, finished up what they were doing and, and uh, the prime contractor is finishing up the remaining earthwork that's out there. So whether the, I mean, that's a, that's a means and methods question, that's a, up to the prime contractor and how he does that work. But they had some kind of issue where the prime is now responsible for finishing up that work on their own. That's my understanding. Uh, it does not mean that they won't have the equipment out there to do this work. Uh, certainly timeline is a, is a, of the essence, right? Because we wanna make sure that we're not waiting until all the equipment is demobilized in order to do this work. There is, there is cost in that. So I, but I don't know if that answered the question.
Yeah, I, you know, I just um, wanted to make sure that this is just the, you know, pro- the process that we're going through. That it doesn't necessarily mean that we have to throw up red flags that, you know, it's gonna cost us more and this and that and the other. The agreements have pretty much already been made, correct?
There is a, there's an agreement between the city and the county that we'd each contribute fifty thousand dollars and a hundred thousand dollars from the other party. Now, the question of what is it going to cost to do has not been answered.
I thought that the other party agreed to do it for two hundred thousand dollars and that's where we came up with.
They indicated that they could, so what they didn't state in here when she came forward was what are her assumptions? And I don't think her scope assumptions were the same as what our scope assumptions are. And so we're merging those two together to try to figure out where the delta is and what that cost difference might be.
And uh, can I, can I say a couple of things?
Please.
That my, the idea of putting this contingency money there is really mine alone. Uh, I, I never uh, talked to Andrew or the mayor about it. I just, I just haven't felt good about this. Uh, and I don't know, you could, you're, you could give me your professional opinion as to whether you think this project can be done for two hundred thousand.
So I don't think there was any problem with the scope as a two inch asphalt overlay with, uh, I believe it was a four inch. Uh, base course, but that may not be sufficient either. So as, as you pointed out and Brian has pointed out as well, that there are uh, concerns about making sure that we have a, a facility that. Is gonna last a long time, that doesn't require immediate maintenance, the, the moment it gets put in the ground. Uh, obviously soils in Pueblo, we have swelling soils and so we wanna make sure that we don't have uh, waves in this runway. It's, it's going to be, you know, it's at this moment, two hundred thousand dollars to do the eight hundred by five hundred, or eight hundred by fifty. Uh, sorry, eight hundred by one hundred and fifty foot runway was uh, about two hundred thousand dollars. sorry, 800 by 150 foot runway was, uh, about $200,000. Um, Brian's scope showed a pilot staging area, and I'm going to get the terms wrong, pilot staging. And, uh, you know, essentially a staging area behind that as well. And so it's a little bit more asphalt. It's not exceptionally large amount, but those additional kinds of things keep adding up. In addition, if we're going to put another inch of asphalt out there, that's, uh, you know, a third more asphalt cost. So, uh, those are, those are all considerations that we just need to make sure we're, uh, we're, we're understanding as we go in on the cost estimate.
Who is the, oh, I'm sorry.
I'm hoping that we're not going to have to use, uh, the money at all, but I, I just, I just am fearful that just based on the bids that we had two years ago, oh, I, I just, I'm fearful that it's not going to get done.
Who is, who is the engineer that is, um, prepping the scope of work?
So right now it's been, uh, Brian Crusoe, who's president of the Sky Crow and also is a, is a, is a professional engineer. And myself have been working on scope of that. He has prepared a, um, estimate with his desired scope. Um, and if that's the scope that we choose to press with the county, the county will put that out to bid. And then there maybe have to be a discussion afterwards if there's going to be a cost discrepancy between what we're asking for and the $200,000 that's been set aside so far.
Okay. And then, um, how long has the Sky Corral been, um, using that property?
Decades, uh, 50 years, nineteen seventy something or sixty something, I believe.
Nineteen sixty something. And who isn't, was in charge of the maintenance? Cause it was in pretty bad disrepair, correct?
Right. It is a city facility. Uh, they're owned by the city. Uh, the, there's a current permit up there that requires, uh, maintenance. I believe the Sky Crow is responsible for maintenance of the facilities that are there. That includes runway, that includes their facilities as well. They have some sheds and some storage lockers and things out there as well. So they take care of those facilities.
What was the amount of, um, their lease agreement?
So the lease agreement is zero dollars. So they use the space, uh, the city lends them the space to use.
So it's zero lease dollars and they were in charge of maintenance and it was poorly maintained.
It's, it, it's, I mean, it's an old facility. It's
Well, yeah, but there was no, there was no annual maintenance, no, 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 nothing like that.
Yeah, I wouldn't say nothing, but there, but there is
Saw, I saw, um,
Right. There's, there's fabric, there's fabric on top of the asphalt payments as well. So they've stretched that out there to try to preserve that and keep it out of the sun. So it's extended the service life of it, but it's in, it's in, it's time to be replaced.
So if we're going to put a more quality airstrip out there, um, are we going to start, um, leasing it? And making sure that we maintain it so that it adheres to, you know, um, annual maintenance? I mean, this is a huge investment.
So this will ultimately be a decision of council. Uh, so at some point, a, a revised permit needs to be brought forward for city council to approve, uh, related to the terms and conditions of the use of the facility. Um, so that's a separate agreement or permit from the agreement we're talking about with the county. At some point, the permitted area that is currently permitted, part of that is now going to be covered by the new Medal of Honor Road. So that won't be the permitted area going forward.
Okay.
Uh, the President Sky Cora found an area that will work that we can get, that is within city property that, uh, can be permitted for their use.
Mm-hmm. Yeah, because I, I, I would think that, you know, we need to probably generate some revenue out of there in order to maintain it. And, you know, just like the enterprise golf fund, right? That, that, the enterprise golf is, is paying for its maintenance, it's paying for all of its things. Um, so, I mean, cause it's, you know, it sounds to be pretty expensive. Go ahead, um, counselor.
I just wanted to say that, uh, no, you can, you can go ahead. Okay. I, I just wanted to say, uh, had the county not put the road in that place, they were perfectly happy with the condition of that airstrip. Uh, they, you know, uh, they've done maintenance throughout the last 50 years. There's no question about that. But this is a situation, uh, and if you want to use an analogy, uh, if your roof on your house is 20 years old and it gets hailed on and it's destroyed, you get a brand new roof. Uh, you know, so, so the question about should they be, uh, doing something more? Uh, they haven't bothered the city for 50 years. They were happy with the airstrip the way it was. And just be, because of a condition that both the city and the county did to build that road, which is the right thing to do. Uh, they, the, the, the strip now is worthless. I mean, it's, it's, you know, we could have walked away from this and said, yeah, you know, we, our asset got destroyed. We'll just walk away from it and they'll have to go their own separate way. But I, I think it's important that we protect our asset. And, and about charging them anything, uh, they have, don't they have a current contract now? Uh, or a, some sort of a lease that they pay zero?
That's correct. There's a permit right now for the permitted area that they're authorized to use, which includes the runway and, and the area, the land on which their facilities sit.
And if they don't use it, uh, we just have a lot full of, an acreage full of tumbleweeds. And by the way, they do have an economic, uh, side to their story and that they have events here in Pueblo that bring in a lot of national flying clubs that stay in our hotel rooms again, buy our food and the whole nine yards.
Part of, to your point on the events, there are, there were two events specifically that, uh, Mr. Crusoe and I were talking about that. One in May and one in sometime two D scheduled in 2025. So we're trying to also make sure that the facilities are either not disturbed before the event, so that they're usable during that event, uh, or that work is done between the events, whatnot, so that, uh, those events could go on as, as planned.
Uh, counselor, I mean, President Alif.
Thank you. Um, so this was a very contentious issue that is just, should be fresh on everybody's mind because we just went through this a few months ago. I mean, literally city council was not going to approve that road the way that they wanted to do it. And, uh, we had meetings, we had the, the county commissioners, the attorneys, everybody was in here. And at the, at the last minute, they produce a contractor that says they're willing to, to redo the runway for a hundred thousand dollars. And if the city would commit to the $50,000, we get this deal done. And so city council, as I remember it, and I mean, people could go back and replay that, city council all felt that was a great deal. We pay 50,000, they pay 50,000, the road goes in, everybody's happy. So it's literally mind boggling that we're even having a discussion about how we may need to spend more money because I won't support spending one cent moving forward on that. That should be the county's responsibility. It was the county that went in and disrupted everything because they had to move the road. We had our, this, uh, Sky Corral sitting there for 50 years, like, uh, Counselor Flores said, didn't bother anybody. And all of a sudden, because the county needs to put the road in a specific place, it causes grief. We compromised, said, okay, it's going to cost us 50,000, let's spend the 50,000. But, I mean, another penny on that to me is ridiculous. And that, that, that should be the county's responsibility. If their people came in and said, we can do it for a hundred thousand and it's going to cost them 150,000 to do it. Oh, well, we put in our 50,000, just like the original agreement, uh, stated. But that's, I mean, that's no way, that, that, that's no way to, uh, conduct business is to say, we can do it for a hundred grand, everybody signs off on it. Then all of a sudden now we need to come up with another, and I understand what you're saying, it may not be a hundred grand, but why are we coming up with a penny more? This was their agreement. This is what they wanted to get done. City council didn't come up with this, this, uh, whole idea of, oh, we're going to split the 500,000 and Sky Corral will go along with it. So, I mean, that's just my take on it. I'm, I, I wouldn't support another dime.
Um, so, Mr. Hayes, what you're saying is that there was a change in the scope of work?
There's a discussion still to be had about what the final scope of work is. Mr. Crusoe has a very specific idea.
Previous, we had previous, uh, proposals on it, is that correct?
Mr. Crusoe had, had brought in an estimate for, I believe it was a three inch asphalt milling over, overlay. And, uh, I can't remember the, again, the thickness of the base course, but he had a very specific idea in mind. Um, and what I'm getting at is that the lady who stood up here didn't necessarily know his assumptions when she stood up to say that $200,000 would cover it and we'll put in the 100K. Uh, so coming back and again, you have those two extra, uh, pad, pads that are adjacent to the runway. Uh, and then the additional asphalt thickness, if those are additional costs and those are things that we want to demand, we just, all three parties still need to have a conversation about what that additional cost might be. It may be that it can be done within the 200,000. One of the advantages of this project is that the asphalt plants, there's going to be an asphalt plant set up out there. And so they will be able to make asphalt cheaper than what we typically buy for. So that's an advantage of this and it may be less of an impact than we're talking about.
Okay.
But I just want, if we're going to continue to push for facilities that are, uh, above and beyond what the county's or the contractor's expectations were, there's got to be some, uh, discussion about that delta in cost. Whether that is our responsibility or county's, I understand, I understand the arguments.
Okay. So in reality, we've, we've committed to 50,000, like, um, President Alif said. And, and anything they figure out above and beyond that is probably going to have to go back to the county to get it done.
And ultimately, they're going to, they're going to bid this out. And so they're going to have, they're going to find out how much it's going to cost to do. So that conversation with the county is about to happen here where the discussion of scope and what is going to be done, what's the city's going to accept needs to happen here soon. That's where we're at.
Okay. Alrighty, uh, Counselor Gomez?
I'm trying to figure out this contractor that in reference to the hundred thousand dollars and how's that work? Somebody, there's 200,000.
I'm not, I just, from my experience, uh, and all of the pitfalls here, uh, I, I just, I just wanted to make sure that we didn't land up with, uh, nothing out there. And, uh, uh, I'm hoping that, uh, this number is really just a contingency number and that we don't have to use it, but.
How does a contractor fit into this though? I still don't get that part. Did they, they gave us a hundred thousand dollars?
Uh, it, it was, it was an in-kind gift from Siete Inc., which is a highway general contractor that has got the contract to re, to build that road. And, uh, they came forward, uh, on the night that we were contemplating not, not approving that road until they, we settled this issue. So on their own, uh, they were willing to contribute a hundred thousand dollars toward this road. And probably some of their labor would come free with that too, I guess, and.
But willing as versus actual and what's, what we've got. We have a number yet? We don't have a number. We have a promise.
We don't.
So we have, we have the commitment of a hundred thousand from the contractor and we have a commitment of 50,000 from the city and 50,000 from the county. So we have a bank of about 200,000 right now that is dedicated to the project. Still needs to be budgeted and appropriated from the city's part and conveyed to the county. But ultimately again, the county will put this contract out to bid. So they'll receive our 50,000, they'll receive whatever the contribution is from the contractors, the hundred thousand, and then they'll contribute their own 50,000 in. But they're going to go out and again bid, and if their bids come back at 220,000 and they say, we need to figure this out, that may be a place where there's a discussion for council commissioners or the contractor or all three.
So we've kept our commitment and according to what Counselor, President Alif has said, we were given all the marbles upfront and now we're changing the game a little bit. And now we're telling me you need on a hu- a hundred grand just in case.
Sure.
Why would we do that?
The only, the difference between the initial discussion and now has been a, a discussion about scope of work and whether we're going to do a three inch asphalt overlay or a two inch asphalt overlay or these additional pads that are going to be out there. If, if Siete didn't know about those pads in the initial discussion and they thought they could just get the runway built for the 200,000.
Who didn't know?
Siete, the, the contractor.
Okay.
Contractor who was making the commitment on the 200, they, they thought they could build that runway for 200,000. Again, nothing that's in writing, right? They just stood up and said, we'll give a hundred thousand dollars to the project. Correct.
Yeah, they said that they would, they would do the work for 200,000.
They thought that the scope could be completed for 200,000.
200,000, they would contribute 100,000, 50 from the city, 50 from the county.
Correct. With, but again, when I went back to validate what her assumptions were the following day, to make sure she understood what they just signed up for, their understanding was a two inch asphalt overlay, not a three. And so that's a difference that, that was, um, you know, about a third of the cost of just asphalt material. Not necessarily a whole bunch of extra time or material, or labor, but extra material costs that would be in there. Again, I don't think it'll drive the project over budget by 50% or 30%.
What is, what, what exists?
We're about to go do core samples to confirm, but I think that there's a three inch, I think. So we're going to, we're going to confirm that and make sure.
So again, we're placing light with light. Not voting on this tonight and, uh, at the time that we have, we're voting on the budget. Uh, we either include this ask by me or we don't. Uh, so, you know, and, and there's no chance that they're going to be able to put this out to bid. I mean, what is your timetable now, Andrew?
So I'm, I need to bring you, uh, counsel, a, an ordinance with an agreement to approve, to convey the money, again, to set the expectations for scope of work and for acceptance criteria for the city. So those, that's where we're at next. That's the, that's the part that the county will need to take the next step in bidding this thing out and getting that project started. My understanding from them is that their intent is to bid this out completely separately from the road project. That this, it may be the same contractor who, who ultimately bids and wins it. But this is not part of the Medal of Honor project per se. They have a separate, um, project that they're setting up for that.
So legally, I think they have to do.
I believe so.
We can only vote on what we are told. So if you're going back to the pros, the overlay, the asphalt, all this other stuff you're throwing at us. And you're saying it's the difference between two inch and three inch. But we were told this was set. And if they're going to come back now and say, oops, we made a mistake, why are we paying for the oops?
Sure. And that's the question, I think President Alif is saying is, we committed $50,000, make it happen. The other, the other, uh, the other alternative is Counselor Flores' position that we are asking for something that was not part of the assumptions. So that's, that's the place where these two just need to meet.
Well, the problem now is, is that the county got everything they wanted. And when it goes out to bid and it's going to cost 285,000 dollars to complete it, it, it's going to come back to us as we're going to have to spend another 85,000 dollars. And we can gripe and moan and groan all we want, but that's how the, I mean, it's just, it's disheartening. It's very disheartening and I hope it doesn't turn out that way, but you know.
Well, you know.
The writing's on the wall.
Kind of took us out of, takes us out of negotiating power when they know we've already got the money allocated for it. You know, I
You'll recollect, the county didn't think they should put a penny because of the economic boost it was going to give to the city in sales tax. Uh, you're going to see a lot of service stations there, maybe a hotel, all kinds of stuff. And that was their argument and, uh, they're probably going to stick with that argument.
Okay, well.
Thank you.
All right. So, uh, the only other, I, we do a lot of studies, Mayor, and I noticed that, um, a constituent brought it to my attention in regards to a study for
CSAC?
CSAC.
The needs assessment?
The needs assessment. I mean, isn't that what the board's for?
Yeah. So it's my understanding that the board, um, asked for the needs assessment.
They don't feel qualified to make those.
Do you have anything else to add to the need assessment from CSAC? But it was their ask.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, yes, it was a recommendation from the commission. Um, it was $25,000 from the city and then the county was going to contribute 25,000 for the assessment study.
And what's it, what, what is, what's the expectation out of the assessment study?
To have a better, uh, idea of the priorities that the commission would be looking at, uh, making recommendations on CSAC funding.
Well, that's kind of what we put a commission in place for. Um, is, were they feeling that they were struggling in these past years in making those recommendations? What, what, what brought this?
I don't really absolutely know the, the basis on it, although I think that what they're looking at is what are priorities that they can establish through this, through this study to be able to, um, look at projects that might be presented to them in the future that might, um, be closer to what the priorities that come out of this study.
And, um, how long does that study take?
It'll be like, uh, six, no more than six months to be able to be completed.
Six months, will they even be ready for the, uh, 20? Six months, will they even be ready for the twenty, twenty, twenty twenty-six? By the time they get their, well, because we don't allocate it, so it won't even be for this year, they won't even get for twenty twenty-fives recommendations, probably by the time the study's over, they won't be going to have any.
This will be, because of the way the funding's set up, it probably would be, I mean, the study would be completed, but it would be for funding that would be allocated towards the following year.
The following year? So for twenty twenty-six? Have, has there been similar studies like that with citizen groups or wherever we're spending, you know, they, they talk about citizens groups and how important they are. But what it seems like is a lot of these committees are not, they don't hold people that are familiar with scopes of work, impact, all of that. And so is this basically like a teaching program for the CSAC board?
I think that there probably is some education of, of the board and projects, reviewing projects as part of this. But I do think it's looking at what are projects that they, that the board can look at prioritizing the types of projects that they would like to see and potentially fund into the future.
Is there any kind of education with the board? When you comprise a new board, do you have any education that you put out as far as priorities and so forth? Or understanding what their role is?
I'm not fully aware of that and one of the reasons why is that the, the county is actually the lead agency for managing and administering CSAC. The city does provide assistance to that board, but it, under our contract, it's really Pueblo County that manages and oversees the CSAC commission.
So we're looking at fifty thousand for a study then? What is, and what is the county's take on this?
The county's has, they'd have to approve this in their budget, but they've made verbal commitments that they would match the city's twenty-five thousand if that was approved by the, by the city.
Are they putting equal amounts? I think that was a question too. Is it equal amounts for the county to, to the city as far as the CSAC fund?
I believe that it is.
And then the county gets an administrative fee out of there too?
Yes.
So for twenty twenty, well, this one becoming, this can't come out of the funds that are allocated for CSAC? Is it coming this additional to the four hundred thousand, four hundred and fifty thousand?
Percentage of the overall funds that are committed by both the city and the county. The county gets, I believe it's a five percent allocation of those funds for administering.
And so this just can't come out of that? It has to come in additional, in addition to that?
That's my understanding, although I will verify that and get back with the mayor's office on whether or not any of the administrative funds could be used to fund the study rather than having those just be transferred to the county for managing the CSAC program.
Yeah, that would be, that would probably be more palatable to people. I mean, because like I said, we have studies after studies after studies on projects that may not even be able to take place because we don't have funding for them. I'm not just saying with your department, Mr. Hobbs, I'm talking about overall. We do, we do studies and studies and then we don't have any funds to complete like a project out of it. So, okay, that's good for thought with counsel. Go ahead.
You know, we talked about Needs Assessment, I don't know if that's a code name for a study, but all these terms they throw at us left and right, it seems to me we might need a Needs Assessment to see if we need a Needs Assessment. I mean, it just gets overwhelming. And I wouldn't be opposed if the gal that, just Melissa, you're I guess a nonprofit person, got and looked at some of this and maybe even revamping the whole thing. But CSAC, to me, and the calls I've been getting on some of the stuff that's happening within there, that, that organization, sixteen members, you know, then you got to cut it down to make sure you can get a quorum and I don't know if sixteen members is, your vote is diluted basically. But maybe that's something what Melissa could look at or the mayor's office could look at then, see maybe we got to revamp the whole thing. Back in the day, I guess when they first started, it was pretty active and they did pretty well. But the things that they did with the study with the nonprofits, I'm still impressed with that. And whittling that down by forty-nine percent, using a surgical knife on it, pretty impressive stuff. So I think we have somebody here that might be able to take, I don't know what you think about that, Mayor, but I'm just throwing it out.
Sure, you can take a look at it. I said, sure, we could take a look at it.
CSAC is a city council, county commissioner board. If you want to revamp, then you need to bring something forward or we can come together and bring something forward, present it to the, to the county commissioners and, and change it. I mean, we can do whatever we want to do with, with the CSAC board. So I'm just clarifying that. If you have ideas, we need to bring them forward and we'll figure it out.
Yeah, and I think for something, my personal opinion is for something like this, that these studies should be done within their budget allocated. So if we're giving them four hundred and, is it ninety-five or twenty, ninety-five thousand, that that twenty-five thousand should come out of that instead of additional with any type of study that we're having to do like this. Okay?
Then this pretty much concludes. So these are just the funding sources and a chart for you, for you to be able to see. So happy to take any questions or comments or.
Any additional questions, Counselor Flores?
Yeah, getting back to the last topic, there are, I, I tried to look them up, but I, I don't know. Somewhere when we were talking about CSAC, we were basically under a set of rules. And I'd like our legal department to bring those back to us. Because there, the, the way we receive that money, at one time it was, I, I thought it was money that came through CBDG money. And there are strict rules about how that money can be used, whether or not you can expense payroll or expense the cost of a study, which I doubt whether that's going to give us permission under those rules. But these are all legal things that we've signed on the dotted line. And so we, we need some legal advice here on a lot, half of the questions that were asked here tonight would be answered by our legal counsel, reviewing those contracts and then coming back to us and telling us what we can and cannot do.
Yeah, I think Counselor Flores, what Counselor Maestro was referring to was the four hundred and ninety thousand dollars that's allocated to the non-departmental to CSAC. CSAC is also the overseer of the CDBG funds that come through the federal government and that's the part that you're talking about. It's about one point four million dollars a year.
Yeah, the four ninety is allocated by us. There aren't any regulations behind it.
So in the, in the agreement and the bylaws of CSAC, it states that those dollars go to the non, to the nonprofits that apply for the, the, the money. But I think Counselor Flores brings up a good point. Doesn't, it doesn't necessarily say you can't use the money for a study when, if it's related to the exact same thing. But I, if I remember as I read it, it clearly stated that that's where the money goes.
Well, yeah, we'll get. Sure.
If it's, yes, if it's cost of doing business, like the administrative fee gets to come out of those funds. So it'd be nice to know the details of that.
Sure. Does anybody else have any additional questions on overall budget or capital at this point?
I have one last question. We have these contractual arrangements with HSPPR. We have Zoo, we have Mountain Beulah Park. How are the capital needs of those organizations met? Since we own all of the, we own the facilities as a city of Pueblo, are they treated just like any other department or were there any, were there any capital improvements that were going to be made to the zoo? To Beulah Mountain Park? To any of, I, I don't think we're responsible for, for the animal shelter. I think that's the county's responsibility. But we may have some responsibility there too on the building, I don't know.
I think for HSPPR, because that is the only one that does have a dollar amount and we do pay a portion of their costs to the building. If something significant happens, the city does help cover that cost. As far as the, the mountain park, there were some capital improvement asks in their budget for vehicles and a couple other things. If you take a look at their request sheet through the non-departmentals, the zoo, I believe, had a seventy-five thousand dollar ask and they had a seventy-five thousand dollar ask last year that I believe the council approved and we've still haven't received any invoicing for the capital that, that they should have done in twenty twenty-four. So that's something that we're still waiting.
Okay, thank you.
Anything else? All right, with that, we are.
Madam Chair, I move that we go into executive session for the purpose of determining positions relative to developing strategy for negotiations and or instructing negotiators under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent E, parent I, and to discuss the purchase, acquisition, lease, transfer or sale of real, personal or other property interest under CRS Section twenty-four dash six dash four oh two, parent four, parent A. And more specifically described as discussion relating to the city-owned first floor of the PBR building.
Have a second. All those in favor say aye. All those against say nay. Okay, ayes have it.